Good evening, we're going to call this meeting in order. It is 6:04 on December 3rd. Can we have the roll call, please? Actually, we'll do the invocation first and we'll do the roll call. So, Mr. Artukanyan will do the invocation, I'll do the flag salute.
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities that you present to us and the opportunity to serve you and this great city, and please help us accomplish our goals. In your name I pray, amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair.
Board Member Liu?
Present.
Board Member Artukanyan?
Present.
Board Member Hadian?
Present.
Vice Chair Eaton and Chair Rosati.
I am here.
Just for the record, Vice Chair Eaton had mentioned that she lives within 500 feet of the property, so she was not going to attend tonight's meeting. Understood. Do we have any announcements? No announcements. Okay. We have one hearing tonight, so why don't we roll into that. Appeal of the Community Development Department Director's approval of a single-family special development permit and hillside development permit. Project number, again, is 18-0000368-3147 Mesa Verde Drive. This is the time and place for hearing on the project appeal of the Community Development Director's decision on project number 18-0000368 concerning the application for a single-family special development permit and hillside development permit. The project site is located at 3147 Mesa Verde Drive. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant, the applicant's representative, the appellant, the appellant's representative, or any other person?
No.
No.
Mr. Ramirez, have the notices required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Do we have a full, do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents?
Yes, and that includes the PowerPoint presentation copies that we left in front of your desk.
And are there any written communications on this matter?
No additional correspondence beyond what's already in your packet.
Okay. Will the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
May I please stop the presentation? Good evening, members of the planning board. This is Daniel V. Associate Planner from City of Burbank, Community Development Department. Before you sit down, it's an appeal to the Community Development Director's approval of a single-family development permit and hillside development permit located at 3147 Mesa Verde Drive. The appeal was filed during the 15-day appeal period, and five appellants were part of that appeal. Five appellants did submit one joint appeal, just for clarification. I'll begin by giving us, giving some background on the project site. The proposal is located at 3147 Mesa Verde Drive, property that is located within the city of Burbank Hillside overlay area. Looking at a more zoomed-in version of the project site, the property is located above Brace Canyon Park, at the end of a cul-de-sac within a single-family residential neighborhood. You could see the property on the screen in blue with a star on it. Over the past three years, the city of Burbank Planning Division has reviewed three separate residential applications regarding the project site. Submitter number one was submitted in 2015. This was a request for a single-family development permit and hillside development permit. Submitter number two was submitted in 2016, and it was a second request for a single-family development permit and hillside development permit. And the third submittal is the application that has been appealed before you tonight. It was submitted earlier this year and is the third request for a single-family development permit and hillside development permit. We'll begin by going over submittal number one. It was a proposal that was submitted under the interim development control ordinance. Many people know it as IDCO. The request was for a 6,052-square-foot two-story home with a 610-square-foot garage that was reduced later in size to 4,255 square feet. Given that city staff could not make the required findings for approval of the application, on March 2nd, 2016, the request was denied by the CDD Department. Subsequent to the denial of the project, the project was appealed to the planning board for their consideration. The planning board heard the project at a public hearing and upheld city staff's decision, therefore denying the proposal. Submittal number two was a proposal that was also submitted under the interim development control ordinance or the IDCO. The request was for a 4,000-square-foot two-story home with a 610-square-foot garage. Given that city staff could make the required findings for approval of the application, on September 19th, 2016, the request was approved by the Community Development Director. Subsequent to the approval of the project, the project was appealed to the planning board for their consideration. The planning board heard the project at a public hearing and upheld staff's decision, therefore approving the proposal. However, the planning board's decision was appealed to the city council. The city council heard the project and reversed the planning board's decision, therefore denying the proposal. During the city council meeting, city council provided feedback that they recommended it be considered as part of any new proposal on that project site. The feedback included, "The home should be designed to meet the neighborhood compatibility design guidelines. The second-story footprints of the home should be redesigned in order to minimize the impacts on views of the surrounding properties. The second-story footprints of the home should be redesigned in order to minimize impacts on privacy of the surrounding properties, and the home should incorporate additional architectural characteristics that are predominant in the neighborhood such as extended roofies." Moving on to the current proposal, which is being considered tonight, the project is requesting approval of a 3,551-square-foot home with a 591-square-foot garage. This includes a request for a setback exception which would be approved as part of the hillside development permit. As identified in the staff report, the exception is being requested in order to maintain an existing four-foot, three-inch setback that currently exists in the current home that was burned down in 2014. This proposal was designed to consider the recommendations provided by the city council. Some of the modifications that were incorporated into the plans include the following. The size of the structure was reduced by a net difference of approximately 700 square feet. The size, footprint, and overall height of the second story was reduced and shifted away from neighboring properties in order to minimize the project's impacts on privacy and the views of the surrounding neighborhood. The overall height of the home was reduced from 27 feet in height overall to 23 feet in height, and the design of the home was modified to incorporate architectural characteristics found in the surrounding neighborhood. There's an image of the proposed site plan as can be seen. The home would be oriented at an angle, and a majority of the home would be positioned away from the front property line. And there's an image of the front elevation that's being proposed as part of this project which shows what the home would look like if approved tonight. When reviewing the application, city staff assessed the project for compliance with the allowed building envelope under the single-family zoning regulations, which requires compliance with standards such as maximum height, floor area ratio, setbacks, and required parking; the hillside development ordinance, which requires that additional considerations be given to the topography, privacy, and the views of surrounding properties; and the neighborhood compatibility design review checklist, a guiding document that sets specific design criteria that has to be met by single-family homes in order to achieve the city standard of compatibility. Based on city staff's assessment of the project, it is city staff's determination that the project is in compliance with the applicable regulations and compatibility review requirements, and that the required findings could be made to approve the project. Given this determination, on September 10th, 2018, the Community Development Director approved the proposal. As already mentioned, the Community Development Director's approval of the project was appealed and is before you tonight. The appellant's appeal application indicates that the project was appealed for the following reasons. First, the project is inconsistent with the neighboring homes in the area. And secondly, the project is inconsistent with the neighboring homes in the area due to size, height, and bulk. In response to the appeal, the project complies with the building envelope, a lot on the property as established by the zoning standards, the hillside development ordinance, and the required findings for a single-family development permit and a hillside development permit. Additionally, the project complies with the neighborhood compatibility design review checklist, which, as I've already indicated, is a set criteria that has to be met in order to meet the city standard of compatibility within a neighborhood. In conclusion, given that the project is in compliance with the zoning standards, the hillside development ordinance, and the neighborhood compatibility design review checklist, it is city staff's assessment that the applicable findings can be made for approval of the application. Therefore, staff's recommendation, the planning board approval resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank, denying an appeal of the Community Development Director's approval of project number 18-0000368 for a single-family development permit and a hillside development permit. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available should there be any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have four appellants who have filed one appeal together. The appellants will be given a combined time of 15 minutes to state their case. Then, the applicant will given, be given opportunity to state his case after the public testimony is complete. The appellants and the applicant will be allowed time for rebuttal. We will first hear from the appellants or their representative. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes.
Could we get the screen?
Go ahead and then.
Okay. Good evening, members of the planning board, staff, and members of Burbank. My name is Jim Casey. I represent an organization called Preserve Burbank, and Preserve Burbank is an ethnically diverse grassroots movement of over 400 Burbank residents and business owners, encouraging, promoting, and supporting the city of Burbank's programs, which preserve our community's architectural history, restore the design integrity of our community's built heritage, and inspire new contextual design for the future. We are not against new construction or progress, but we believe that the rights of the existing homeowner should be equal to that of the new homeowner, developer, or builder. We believe this project violates the Burbank Hillside Ordinance and, as such, should be denied. What we want to do is summarize the cost to the city for this particular project. In 2015, the applicant paid for a hillside development permit. The cost to evaluate a project at that time and currently, according to Patrick Prescott and the planning department, is $3,703. The project was denied by the planning department. The applicant then paid an appeal fee, and the project was brought to the planning board. According to Patrick Prescott and his staff, the cost to prepare for any project brought to the planning board is an additional $5,132. The project was denied by the planning board. The following day, the applicant went to the planning desk, and it turned into quite a scene. There is an email that we have confirming that there was a lot of yelling, and the planning department was quite rattled by this. I was there the following day when Carol Barrett was late for a meeting because she had to bring lunch to her entire staff to apologize for the behavior of the applicant. What the planning department decided to do, instead of holding to the denial, they instead authorized $1,200 to be paid to an architectural firm that is on contract with the city. And it's important to note, this is the first time ever that the city has taken taxpayer funds to pay for a residential property to be redesigned. This has never been done before. This has been done on large commercial projects, but the city allocated $1,200 to redesign Mr. Tenoyan's project. This revised project was then approved by the planning department. At that time, Preserve Burbank and the neighborhood looked at the now-revised project and filed for an appeal. Now, the cost to prepare for the next appeal is $5,000. Now, you may ask, well, if they've already approved it, and they've already analyzed the project, why would there be an additional $5,000 expenditure? This question was asked specifically at a meeting, the city council meeting, when the increase in fees was being discussed or rationalized. And Fred Ramirez said that whenever any project is resubmitted, they have to look at the input and the information as part of the appeal, and it costs another $5,000 to prepare for a planning board meeting. This appeal was denied by the planning board. We then reapplied another appeal fee, and we brought the project to the city council. And again, the cost to prepare from planning board, even though it was successful, Mr. Ramirez stated, is an additional $5,309. So, that project was then denied, five-zero. Let me repeat that. It was denied unanimously. The city attorney also has stated that the appeal was not frivolous, and it was not motivated by anything other than concerns about the size and scale of the project. So, for those of you keeping track, we are now running at $20,653 have been paid by the city of Burbank in time and resources to continue to approve this project. The project was then revised, and by the way, one last comment here. When it was rejected by council, it was rejected without prejudice. And what that means, and by the way, the first rejection by the planning board was without prejudice. What that does is it allows the applicant not to have to wait a year to resubmit. It also waives any additional application fees. So, the applicant has been allowed to resubmit multiple times on this project with no additional fees coming out of his pocket. The new project was then submitted again. We assume a full revision and submission was done by staff to reevaluate the project, so we're looking at another $3,700. The project was then approved, as it sits right now, by the planning department. Once we submitted our appeal, we assume staff then had to spend an additional $5,000 in time and resources to prepare for this evening. Depending upon this evening's outcome, I assume that if the applicant is denied, he will probably appeal it to city council, and I assume that if we are denied, we will likely appeal it to city council. That will be an additional $5,300. So, let's tally this up. The city has spent $35,000 trying to get this house built on this lot. In the meantime, the applicant has only paid $892 for his original permit fee, and he's paid for one appeal fee. That's a total of $1,151. The neighborhood and Preserve Burbank have paid for two appeal fees that were each $259, but the third time we went to appeal, which is this evening, the cost to now appeal a project has gone to $1,200. Now, let me remind you, we were the ones who prevailed at city council. Our concerns about the project were upheld, but we have to pay another $1,200 to come here this evening. The applicant has paid nothing. In the meantime, this is what the property has looked like for the past four years. These are commercial vehicles illegally parked on the property. This is debris and rubbish that are, as far as, as late as last week, are still in front of the home. This is debris and rubbish behind the fence, commercial vehicles. And this is not an uncommon sight in the cul-de-sac. The applicant owns multiple businesses and parks commercial vehicles illegally in front of the property and in his driveway and the adjacent property. So, the question is, how did we get here tonight? Identified in the staff's report when evaluating the neighborhood is this project, this property, 3144 Mesa Verde. It is owned by the applicant. It is right next door. We wanted to look this project up because if it's being considered as part of staff's appeal process or as approving this project, we wanted to know more about it. Here's what we discovered. The project has been put on the multiple listings and has been on for almost two years. It's had an accumulated market time of 546 days. What's interesting is, the square footage as being presented by the realtor is 6,542 square feet. In fact, the notations say, the title shows seven bedrooms, five baths, and 4,485 square feet. I was intrigued by this because I'm a real estate agent, as is Chris Rosati. So, I went in to look the project up, and we went down to the planning desk, and we in fact confirmed that the actual square footage of the home is 6,851 square feet. But it's only being assessed for tax purposes at 4,485 square feet. Now, that's not our issue, but our issue is this. There is no record of a hillside development permit for this property. The Burbank Hillside Ordinance originated in the 1980s to protect views and privacy as well as to maintain continuity of the hillside community and property values. It was largely forgotten and ignored for decades by the Burbank Planning Department. Burbank has had the HDP in effect for decades to protect views and enhance neighborhood compatibility and character, but unfortunately, the planning department has failed to enforce the HDP in recent years, resulting in extreme overbuilding of properties and the development of neighborhood character. Here's one example. At the same time that Mr. Tenoyan was building his project, another developer was redeveloping this project at 1,100 block of East Elmwood in 2005. It was a single-family home, and it was beautifully landscaped. Here's an aerial view of it, hundreds of trees and shrubbery and mature trees. This is what was allowed to be done to this project. It was completely scraped. Hundreds of trees and folies were lost. Oak trees that are protected by the State of California were taken down. This is what the project looks like from the air today. It is mostly concrete and retaining walls. This is what it looked like under construction, and this is what it looks like today. You can check with the police department, you can check with the city. You'll find out that this project's had multiple flooding incidents. It has had excessive street parking, vacation rentals, noise complaints, back taxes, police calls, commercial business rentals, and it's been perpetually vacant and for sale since it was built. The Burbank City Council, after seeing this project, said, "Never again." And this was prior to the IDCO. The Burbank Hillside Ordinance precedes the IDCO. It precedes the new design guidelines, many of which were fashioned from the Burbank Hillside Ordinance. It precedes the new design guidelines checklist. It supersedes the new design guidelines and checklist, and it supersedes FAR for maximum building size. This is a copy of the Burbank Hillside Ordinance, and it requires that if appealed, the council or the planning board may not approve a hillside development permit unless all of the following findings are made. We are concerned, and by the way, there are eight of them. The one we're concerned about is this one, that says that the project must be reasonably consistent in scale and proportion to existing houses in the neighborhood. Now, Mr. Tenoyan has been extremely consistent in one respect. From the first day of the project, when it was denied, I was at the meeting, and he asked this board, "Please, give me a number. Would you please give me a number?" At that time, the question was, how did staff arrive at what was required on the hillside, a reasonably consistent in scale and proportion to existing homes in the neighborhood size? Well, what they do is they look at the entire neighborhood, they draw a circle around it, and then they evaluate each of the properties. This is what you've seen in previous appeals on this project. Here's the total square footage of each project. Now, you have to take out 3144 Mesa Verde because no hillside development permit exists. Therefore, it cannot be used in any reasonable analysis of the project. If you do that, here is Mr. Tenoyan's answer. The smallest home in the neighborhood is 2,146 square feet, and the largest is 2,718 square feet. This is not arbitrary, this is factual. These are the square footages of the home in that neighborhood, and they've been this way for over 30 years. So, the answer to Mr. Tenoyan's question, which staff could have given on day one being proposed tonight, is 3,742 square feet. To be reasonably consistent in scale and proportion to the existing houses in the neighborhood, the house cannot exceed 2,700 square feet. The Burbank Hillside Ordinance precedes the IDCO. It precedes the new design guidelines. By the way, most of the new design guidelines and intent for compatibility came directly from the Hillside Development Ordinance. I know this because Preserve Burbank was the organization that came here pleading for an IDCO. And we were pleading for adding the protections of the hillside to the rest of the Burbank community. It precedes the new design guidelines checklist. The new design guidelines checklist is interesting, and in meeting on this project with Fred Ramirez, he said to me, and I quote, "It really is like putting a tutu on a pig. The pig is still as big as it always was, but what we're going to do is try to dress it up and make it look prettier." The reality is, the new design guidelines checklist doesn't do anything when it comes to size and scale, other than to try to soften it. It supersedes the new design guidelines and checklist, it supersedes FAR for maximum building size, and unfortunately for this applicant, it has no provision for building any homes larger than what is considered reasonably consistent in scale and proportion to existing houses in the neighborhood. In summary, the largest home that could be built in this neighborhood under the Hillside Development Ordinance is 2,718 square feet. The project being proposed is 1,024 square feet larger than any home in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? It is now. Before we open up the hearing to the public, I would invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
First of all, I don't know where I'm going to speak now. I've been here almost five years. Based on the guy mentioned a lot of things, but doesn't have nothing to do with the 3147 project, right? I mean, he's talking about the expenses, this, and I think we are here just for a appeal of 3147 Mesa Verde, but I don't understand what he's talking about. So, what I'm asking you, it's time already to start and build a house. This house already is time to build and make almost three, four times, reduce the project with all the requests, with the city, whatever their request, I did. And I said, "I'm agree. Do you want, I'll just make a single car garage only there? I'll build it. I don't care. If I don't allow to build two-car garage, I'm going to build only one car garage." But they said, "No, you can build 3500 square feet house." But legally, I have a right to build almost 8,000 square feet house, because when I buy this house, the property size was a 22,000 square feet, the 40% allowed coverage, it's allowed to me build 8,000. But I said, "Okay, I have respect to the city, I have respect to this nice neighborhood." And I said, "I'll keep everybody happy. What should I do?" He's mentioning about the trucks. I'm paying $10,000 every year property tax, $10,000 without using the property. Those guys bring the sofa, throwing away the trash, they bring and throwing the, those guys. Should I start to clean it up for them? No, they like to live in the jungle. Let them live in the jungle. I don't care. So, about the trucks, I have to survive somehow to pay my property taxes, and I'm parking in my property, not outside. I parked outside one time, I got a ticket thanks to them. So, now, what I'm asking you, just let me to build this house, make a nice neighborhood. I mean, he's complaining about the trash, this, this, because of his, no, it's empty area. But imagine, if it's going to be nice, beautiful house, it's going to be nice landscaping, no any commercial vehicles going to be parked there, only my beautiful cars going to be there. What does this guy want? I'm asking you, if I have a right to build a house, let me to build a house. If I don't have a right to build a house- If I don't have a right to build a house because of, I'm Armenian, so just edit there, you are Armenian, you're going to have a right to build a house there. Come on, it's a shame already. I'm not building submarine base, Navy base, or up on a hill there, I'm building single dwelling house. And plus, I had the house there already, and I live there. It's not something, I'm cutting the hill, making new driveway, grading, absolutely nothing. I'm using the same floor plan, same foundation, same driveway, same pool, same retaining walls. I'm just adding two bedrooms, because I have a family, my mother, my two child with me, my wife, not just like a two, three cat they're keeping in a home. That's all. What else I'm asking from you guys? I don't, I'm not asking too much. Sorry, my English is not my first language, so that's why I'm not talking perfectly, but you understand. It's time to finish this house, make a nice neighborhood. I mean, this guy looks like he doesn't have a problem with the project, he has a problem with me. Many times, I told him, "I don't like a man, I'm married." But I don't know what his problem, what he wants from me. Why he's following me all the time. He has more information about me than I have myself. My wife doesn't have so many information about me, like he has. He's talking about expenses, IRS, property taxes. Let's just ask those neighbors, talk about 3147 Mesa Verde draft. That's all we have to talk here, right? Nothing else. The house built 14 years ago, that's not his problem. So again, I'm just asking you. I follow up all the city requirements, I have respect to the city, I have respect to City Burbank, because I'm living here 28 years. I built 15 apartment buildings in Burbank, I never had this problem. And I, as city planner, just tell me what my right to build it, and I build it. Do I'm asking too much from you guys? Just let me to finish build, clean up area, make a nice landscaping, that's it. I mean, there is no other option, the house has to be, get built. It's not something, let's say, where are you hiding? This guy going to say, "Oh, I'm doing this, I'm doing that, and I'm thinking..." Who cares what he's thinking? First of all, he doesn't know how to think, and a second, and a second, this is, we have professional people here, those are educated people, they finished university, they graduated to be engineer, planners, they are architects, they understand the project. And same as you, sitting here, you understand the project. Who is he? Just make the law, if somebody wants to build something, make the plan, submit to him first. If he approve, submit the other guy, and then, if everybody approved, then submit to the planner. I finished. So what I'm asking you, just let me finish this house, it's only 3,500 square feet, my house was 2,500 square feet, I just adding two bedrooms. Two bedroom, that's all I'm asking. If I build a house, doesn't block nobody view, doesn't have a height problem, doesn't have a setback problem, doesn't have any, any problem, and plus, you don't see the house from outside at all. The only thing, thing, you see the garage. What else those guys wants? And plus, this guy has a problem here, because he's still my property, two feet by 80 feet, I'm going to knock down that wall, and he's going to lose his pool. That's why he has a problem with me. He's still my property, I got the survey. Sooner or later, I'm going to get that property back from him. So, I don't know what else to say. I mean, there is, it's a shame, there is nothing to talk about this. The project approved with the professional people, they should have respect the city where they live. Those guys getting paid to take care of all the problems in the Burbank, who's those guys? We have to listen to those guys. So they told me, "This is wrong, I make a new, this is wrong, I make a new." I have respect to them, I respect everybody. I said, "I'll follow whatever you give me instruction to do." But I cannot to go and, as that guy say, "Please, let me," how to talk to my wife. Tomorrow, he's going to come and say, "I don't like the way you talk to your wife." Come on. Today, doesn't let me to build the house, tomorrow, he's going to say, "You don't have a right to get married with woman." Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now open up the public hearing for any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of five minutes. I don't have any cards. If anyone wants to speak, fill out a card and come on up. Simon Hamel.
Hi. How are you? Are you all set? Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Simon Hamel, I'm a 12-year resident of Burbank, I have some prepared comments, but before I start, I mean, I went through an appeal recently, and during my appeal, there was a quite a good amount of character attack on me that was false, and I heard some of that stuff tonight with the homophobic comments and that kind of stuff, and I hope we can behave civilly towards each other. We're here to argue on the law, not on hearsay about people's characters. I'm here tonight, though, to speak about the cost of the appeal process and to suggest that the city make two immediate changes to that permitting and appeals process. The first is to immediately raise the initial permit fee, even on a trial basis, to cover the true cost of reviewing projects, hopefully enough to hire more staff trained in our code and architecture law to more efficiently and quickly review the projects. I'm told they are overworked. Basic economics would suggest an increase in that upfront fee, and I'd wager that people will still be building at the current rate. When basic things are missed, a burden, as is demonstrated tonight, is placed on the taxpayer. In the case of my own appeal, I was able to confirm with the California State Architects' Board, as well as our own building department this week, the only legal version of a site plan contains all structures currently standing on a property, and that didn't happen in my case. And I've only appealed one house in my entire 12 years here, and I've been accused of some untoward things, but I would say to everyone that I've lived here for 12 years, and I appealed one single house, and that house was in the center of my view. My view obstruction was a part of my appeal, so wouldn't make much difference for me, but all of the other things in my appeal might apply to avoid other appeals in other cases. Basic things, like buildings not conforming to legal FAR requirements, forms not containing signatures by people that actually own the land, survey information missing in the face of a four-foot natural grade change, which has to follow the law, the land, excuse me, to remain legal. All could have been found long before the appeal, and perhaps avoided altogether these extra expenses, even the $1,200 I had to pay for these basic development items. I've given the city an opportunity to fix these things without going to an immediate second appeal, because I care deeply about the financial health of the city, as I know each of you do. And these problems that I identify, they can be fixed in time. Other people may not be so generous as to give the city the opportunity to make it right in good faith. The second change would be to start charging a few hundred dollars for certain basic entry-level corrections that every licensed architect should know about. For instance, not drawing an entire building, even one called for demolition is against the law, and every licensed architect is aware of that. If corrections are made, for example, and not called out properly and require second or third checks, there should be a penalty for that, because right now, it is the taxpayer footing the bill for that. Even a several hundred dollar fee to cover our staff's valuable time to review and rereview work that is just plain wrong would be a great start to incentivize compliance with lawful conduct. It would also help to protect the city from problems down the road when these kinds of things slip through the cracks. I want to thank you all very much for listening to me. I have sent, I feel that my words were mischaracterized somewhat during my appeal, and I had sent personal apology letters to some of the staff. I did not particularly mean to smear any individual staff member in my appeal, so I do take your criticism to heart, and I did write to them and apologize if they, as individuals, were seen in a bad light because of that appeal. I don't know how that information went missing, and I certainly don't know who did it, I was basically looking to have someone investigate that. So thank you very, very much for your time.
Robert Gregorian.
Hello. My name is Robert Gregorian, and it's interesting to see this happen. I recently went through this process of someone appealing my house, and when you see people from Preserve Burbank come up and say, you know, "The cost is high, it's costing the city a lot of money." Well, you know, if maybe people weren't coming and complaining about houses that were being done within the scope of the rules that are set forward, then there would not be an elevated cost. And honestly, if the cost is high, maybe we should get the cost from the people that are fighting the potential builders. You know, I don't think 1,200 or whatever the cost is right now is enough, because I know the city's not getting all that money back from defending the case, perhaps we increase it maybe tenfold, you know, to recoup the cost, since it's so high, you know. And then on top of that, what else do we have here? I wrote some notes. The calculation of the FAR, this man has about 22,000 square feet, and he's building 3,000 square feet. That's 12%. Everyone else gets about 40%. So that seems very unfair to the property owner. He's paying all that tax, and he only gets to build 12%. He's gone down from almost 6,000 square feet, so about a 50% reduction? It does not seem fair. And then on top of that, we have the Neighborhood Compatibility Review here, which is a checklist to make sure that the views are okay, he's not blocking anyone's views, it's made within the conformity of everything else, you're all aware of what it is. It's been passed, he's past that point. Why are we stating the fact that it's not compatible with the neighborhood? Yeah, we can go ahead and massage the numbers of the houses within the radius that we're comparing it to, and cross out the biggest one, so now his FAR is lower, and we're telling him he can only build 2,700 square feet, when in actuality, it's just manipulation of numbers. Sure, let's go ahead and do that, but that's not fair. We need to follow the rules. The rules are set forward, and we have a group of individuals here that are trying to tell us that they know better. If that's the case, let them come forward and change the rules in the process, but that's not the case. And, you know, in my opinion, if people are saying things about you that maybe you think are, because you might have said something prejudiced towards them, or like, you might not like a certain people, maybe, "I'm Armenian, you don't like me," you know, there might be something behind that. There's usually some truth behind why people are saying rumors. So, basically, to end this conversation, we just need to be more neighborly to people, be a good neighbor, and if we just treated everyone like we want to be treated, everything will go smoothly. The guy's house burned down, he's trying to rebuild it. Imagine if you were in his shoes. Now, you want to rebuild, and I say, "No, let's stop you for four years." I think that's unacceptable.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mike Moynihan, I'm a, been a resident of Burbank for over 20 years, and I have to agree with that gentleman. Let's follow the rules. We have rules. We have a Burbank Hillside Ordinance. Please enforce the ordinance. We love our neighborhoods in Burbank. The character of our neighborhoods brought me here to raise my family, along with the great schools. Let's protect the character of our neighborhoods. Let's welcome neighbors to come into our neighborhood and build, and build by the rules. And I was here the night that the applicant said to you, "Give me a number, just give me a number," was frustrated. It may have been at City Council, may have been planning board, he said, "Give me a number." I sensed his frustration. And so now we have a number, we saw that number tonight. The number is 2,731 square feet. Now, you know, maybe there's an argument to let a builder build a little more, I don't understand why someone can't come into our neighborhood and comply with the Hillside Ordinance, and to want to be a part of the character of the neighborhood. And I also want to bring up the fact that I've heard more than once that this might become a racial thing. I know members of Preserve Burbank, I've spoken to them about many projects. When I've ever heard of anyone appealing, I've never heard of that appellant asking what the name is on that permit. It's always been about the character of our neighborhoods that we want to protect. That's so important to us. We want to welcome in people of all races, all religions, all nationalities into our neighborhood, and we hope that they will become part of our neighborhood and our community. Coming into a hillside neighborhood and wanting to build a house that just is too big, that's, it's easy to see from the appellant's report tonight. It's just too big. We heard that the gentleman wanted to build two more bedrooms, build two more bedrooms, but they, maybe have to make them a little smaller to comply with the Hillside Ordinance, to comply and to match the character of the neighborhood. And I can't stress that enough. I lived most of my life here in Burbank in the flatlands, in a house that was 890 square feet. For me, and my daughter, and my wife, we loved that small house, and I can understand if we grew our family, how we would want to grow our home. But I would also consider my neighbors, and I would consider my community, and if there are rules that say I can only build my house to a certain square footage, I would, I would do that. I would go to the max of that square footage, and I would hope that my neighbors appreciated that. I would look at the neighborhood, I would look at our standards here in Burbank for our ordinance, for the character of a home and the design, the design of the home, and I would honor my community and my neighbors by complying with those restrictions. I know they might not be exactly what the applicant would like, but I hope that the applicant would consider the character of the neighborhoods, our neighbors, our community, and come into the community, build a house by following the rules, by following the Hillside Ordinance, and I'm sure anybody who builds that house, no matter their color, their race, their religion, would be welcome into our community.
Good evening. That was an interesting comment made by the gentleman. Many of us who want to build houses, I just want to respond to that really quickly, are already part of this community in Burbank. Many of us have lived many years, we're just now building a house. So I think we should, we should not only be welcomed, we should have, have been welcomed, and we should have, we should be allowed to exercise our rights to our property. This is the third time I'm here before you guys, and I feel like Burbank has become a school, like a little school, where a bunch of students are bullying others, and this is bothering me. This is not a school where every time anybody bullies others, it costs money, it costs emotionally, and I really want you to understand that. I have watched most of the hearings. When our project was appealed, I started watching the hearings to see where these people are coming from, why are they actually appealing, what's wrong with the project. I saw a lot of discussion where Mr. Casey and Ms. Clearman were present, and they were arguing the law, arguing facts, they were asking the city council to do this, to do that with the laws. Well, they actually shaped the laws, okay, the rules and the ordinances, there was IDCO, Hillside Ordinance, whatever it was, they had a lot of input in it. Well, they passed it, that's great. So now we come here and we comply with these laws. So I don't understand what's the problem now, okay? So are we not allowed to, is it only them who comply with the laws, or should we, when we comply with the laws, the city approves it? Unless we comply with the laws, they're not going to approve it. So clearly, as we had, we, they're all, these people, this applicant has also complied with the law, he has tried very hard to comply with the rules. So I don't understand what the problem is. We had, we had to wait for a whole year until Ms. Clearman and Mr.- until Ms. Clearman and Mr. Casey exercised their rights to uh to to appeal. Our project was approved by the city council because it was in compliance. Afterwards, Mr. Casey wrote an email to Preserve Burbank with the subject, even though I'm not a member of Preserve Burbank, I could not be. Um Mr. Casey wrote an article or or something, uh an email saying, we've lost the battle, but we'll win the war. Since then, there was another family that had complied with the codes, but their project was appealed to. This appeal was also supported by Mr. Casey. This was also approved by this board. Now this one. Clearly, this applicant has also complied, so why are we even here? I'm wondering, what is this war about? And when will it end? We certainly don't want to be a part of any war. Like the gentleman said, we don't want to be arguing with our neighbors. We want to be neighborly. We always have been. Our family personally have been, has been living here for thirty-some years, okay? And we've had no problems with the neighbors. So should we send a message to the community saying not to build any houses? Or should we come here every time to fight this war? I would like a definition of this war. Thank you. I hope you will approve this applicant's project because this is really costing him and his family a lot of grief and a lot of financial difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anita? That's the last card. If anyone else wishes to speak, please come on up.
Good evening. I am just going to uh speak upon what Ashen and Robert have said before, but without much of the jargon. I feel that the defendants, Mr. Casey, Mr. Simon Howell, Hamel, have been saying that there's a lot of homophobia and discrimination occurring. And I just think that we feel that is the case because, no offense, in my opinion, their arguments are so stupid that there's no other basis for us to grab onto. Because from what I heard, especially from Jim Casey's argument, was that he was reaching at such heights at the rules on the ordinances and regulations that you set forward just to find some small little crevice where he could infiltrate and say, oh, you see, this is wrong or this has been uh against the uh ordinance of this and so forth. So this is the tactic that I believe that Jim Casey and Mr. Simon Hamel have been using to completely use up all of our time and energy and sources. And then they come here and they complain and they say, well, you know, this is how much taxpayers' money has been spent to go through all this paperwork. And I believe last time, Mr. Rizotti, you mentioned how much time and energy was spent just to go through Mr. Simel- Ha- Simon Hamel's paperwork, which at the end, uh what you concluded was that there was no validity in his argument. So what I have to say is that a few months ago, I believe, I was, uh I went to lunch that the mayor of Burbank had created. And it was for, it was for the um the infrastructure and the development of Burbank. And one of the measures she discussed was Measure P, which I voted for and I'm in great agreement of, and I'm glad that it passed. However, if we're discussing about increasing sales tax to increase growth and to increase revenue for the town of Burbank, then that means with growth must come new uh people to the town of Burbank as well. How can we grow a town based on yesterday's infrastructure? It has to grow. It is imminent. It must grow. If new people come in, if a town is to grow, then the infrastructure, then the housing, everything must grow. If we constantly have these arguments, which now they are all public record, if people from other towns, cities, countries even, view this online, on YouTube, which they can, I'm telling you right now, especially the millennials, will run from the town of Burbank. Because nobody will want to come and live here. If they come and they constantly have to see that neighbors are fighting with no reason, no rhyme or reason whatsoever, what is the point of coming here, buying property and not being able to enjoy that property for four or five years? What is the point? I mean, Mr. Casey is a real estate agent. I mean, how are you going to sell that to your customer? Or your client, rather, I should say. I just don't understand it. I, this compatibility, neighborhood compatibility review, I believe, is, the structure of it is excellent. The actual, the nuances that build this structure need to be revised, I believe, in my opinion. Because just like we have the Electoral College to serve as the buffer for the population and voting for president, we need something like that to keep people who have biased opinions on how they perceive the law and what the law actually is. That is what we need. Because you cannot have everybody just come up and say, well, I don't like you and I don't really like the fact that you're building a house and I don't really like roses. I prefer tulips in my garden. And boom, that's it. For five years, this man has to go and suffer the consequences. It's absolutely insane. And can you imagine what that would happen if we did that on a macro level in the United States? For the United States, it's embarrassing to have something like this. So that's all I have to say. I truly hope and support uh the applicant's cause. I've been through this myself, so I hope that everything goes in his favor and revisions to the neighborhood compatibility review are discussed for future applicants. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Wegland?
Good evening. Roy Weigand. I wasn't planning on speaking, um but I found this topic very interesting tonight. And the young lady who just spoke very eloquently. I do support the applicant. I also support Preserve Burbank Neighborhoods. There's got to be a balance here. And I think that these people should be able to build their house. But we have to strike a balance. And uh she brought up a lot about growth. And I actually wasn't planning on speaking, but when I heard say that, that brings up a really macro, I think she used the word macro, topic in Burbank. I live in the flatlands by the airport. Um I'm seeing the results of some things. This ties in with bigger houses, too. If a house is too big, that's up to you ultimately, if this is too big for the neighborhood. From the numbers I've seen and what I've watched, the presentations tonight and the speakers, it seems like there's not a great distance that can't be worked out here between the square footage that uh the neighborhood currently has, going up to that maximum number, and what the applicant wants. We have a lot of issues in Burbank at that macro level. You can talk to people down by the Talaria Project. This ties in with bigger houses. That's the big Whole Foods condominium complex that's coming online soon. But they're already seeing a lot of problems down there uh from, with parking and other things. And I know, how does this relate to houses? I'm encouraging you to think long-term and big picture. Uh if we start allowing uh houses that don't comply to the houses around them, we might have unintended consequences. Another example of changes coming to Burbank in my neighborhood is the airport. Um I don't know if you know, a lot of people don't, especially up on the hillside, that they're going to tear down eventually our current airport, which everybody I know loves. The way that you can show up fifteen minutes before your flight and, not fifteen, but thirty minutes and make your flight. One of my big issues with with that is now we're going to have a much larger, busier air, in spite of how it was sold to the voters, this can be a much larger, busier airport. What are the impacts of that? The quality of life impacts. And I would hope tonight that, yeah, on the on the micro level, as we look at this project, that there's not some common ground. I I hate to think that it's along racial lines. I've heard that brought up a couple of times. I think the applicant mentioned he's got fifteen properties, apartment buildings in Burbank, and I applaud him for that. I hope that would be an example that- I I'm sorry, that he built them. And I would say that's a wonderful example of the city not saying, no, you can't build here because you're of a certain group. That was fifteen projects. That's a pretty good record. So I hope that doesn't cloud this issue tonight. A couple of speakers said it way better than me. We welcome everybody. I've got neighbors from Africa, Thailand, the Philippines, Mexico. We all get along well. And uh it that's part of the melting pot we are. That's the reality. And it's a good thing. So let's try to get past that and find common ground here um tonight on this. And and because a lot of people are left hanging, it sounds like. And there's a lot of hurt feelings and we got to get past that and and move on. So thanks for your time.
Thanks. Does the appellant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum time of ten minutes.
Uh good evening, members of the planning board. Just a couple of things, and again, as a follow-up. The right to appeal is everyone's right. In fact, the applicant had a right to appeal and exercise that right. So to say, no, you can't appeal this and you can't appeal that, that's that's not correct. Regarding the costs, uh as we said, the costs are undervalued for the permit. For the time, the resources to properly evaluate a project. Now, this is a discussion for another time. But it just points out that if a project is not properly evaluated on the front end, there will be things overlooked. And the checklist, while it's being referred to as a tool, may not be the answer. The single-family development permit was never intended to override the hillside permit. In fact, the hillside, which has been in effect in place for decades, even if it was not followed, even if it wasn't properly utilized and you see some of the the results of its not, it still was stronger than the single-family development permit. I have some slides I'd like to pull up. Okay. Just to go through, again, when we talk about compatibility and also talking about context. When you look at this neighborhood and you see the homes at the street level, you, some things that, you know, again, there's a, there's a balance there. There's um the roof lines. And you see in the distance some very large houses in the in the background. Those are up in the Burbank estates. Now, those hit, those properties, those, if those homes were dropped down at the street level, they would certainly not be compatible. Again, looking at the the roof lines, this is really interesting. Again, you drive around this neighborhood and you see the context. The second story is very low and understated. The maximum top plate height of the second story is around seventeen feet, much lower than what's being proposed on the project. Again, you see this throughout the neighborhood. The lower, uh the second stories, very understated. This, again, and the, it looks like one large house, but these are, it's a row of houses. This is during a Google Earth view. So you see that continuity. You see that context. It's it's there. You don't need a checklist. It's really common sense. Again, this is, this is the house that was, the second story, much, much um less square footage and the lower top plate heights in context with the surrounding neighborhood. Um with that, I'm going to ask if the um neighbors have any other, any comments or anything? Okay, all right. Again, um thank you for your consideration. Also, uh regarding the exceptions, uh the staff is asking for exceptions, which include the side yard setback, which the minimum is ten feet. And they're asking for four and a half, which is pretty extreme. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Um I do want to address, I guess, the elephant in the room. There have been accusations of prejudice. I guess it's being, the term being used is racism. And also bullying. And I have to admit tonight, both of those allegations are true. The city has been showing prejudice for the applicant by denying without prejudice multiple times the projects that have been rejected and allowing the applicant to repeatedly come back to the city at no additional cost and keep resubmitting his project. The mayor herself said at a meeting about a month ago, she did not understand that when a project is rejected without prejudice, it means that the applicant does not have to pay any more fees. So there has been prejudice here. The city has been prejudiced toward the applicant, toward helping him get this project built. That includes twelve hundred dollars spent unprecedented. The city has never spent twelve hundred dollars to help an applicant get his project approved. As far as bullying, there's been significant bullying. And I will tell you that I've been a professional speaker for over thirty years. I stand here tonight intimidated by a gentleman that has not only come to the planning desk and upset the entire planning department, but also attempted to assault me after the last city council meeting in which his project was denied. The security guards for this building could not get down in time to stop the applicant from attempting to knock me down the front steps of City Hall. It was so traumatic to me that I had, for the first time in my life, filed a police report. That evening, I came back to City Council to put on record what had occurred, and I had to file a police report the following day. I have eyewitnesses, including the attorney that was hired by the neighborhood. In addition to this, the applicant, after failing to knock me down the front stairs, turned around and said, I'm going to find out where your boyfriend lives. I've lived in this city for twenty years. My children are in the acting industry. This is a city that welcomes everyone of every race, gender, sexual preference, and a suggestion that in some way, my sexuality has anything to do with what Preserve Burbank has been trying to do, to try to save Burbank. Now, one of the public comments made, one of the public comments made this evening was that we lost the battle and we won the war. Now, or excuse me, lost the battle, we will win the war. Let me first state that the woman who made this statement, we had appealed her project, had nothing to do with her. It had to do the fact that the planning department and staff failed to acknowledge basements as part of FAR. The project she is building has a sixteen-hundred-square-foot basement. It is unprecedented in Burbank. No one has ever built a basement larger than the average-sized home on the, on the street. Because that was not part of the code, it was not part of the law, we failed in that appeal. And we were fine about it. In fact, I went up and I shook the applicant's hand and I wished her good luck. The war, if you will, has been our city staff's ignorance of the building code, specifically the hillside development permit. The two projects that we did appeal uh on the hillside were successful. They were unanimously enforced by city council. And the city attorney said, none of our applications or appeals have ever been frivolous. They have always complied with the codes and the laws. The war, and and by the way, anyone listening to this, I don't care where you come from, what your last name or your first name is, if you'd like to be a member of Preserve Burbank, send me an email at info@preserveburbank.com. I'll add you to our list. Can I please ask that the-
Let's wrap this up, please. Yeah, whatever time is left. And if, we're talking about Mesa Verde Drive?
Yes, we are. We are. We're talking about Mesa Verde Drive. We are. And so what the, anyone is able, is allowed to be on our email list. And if you miss the email for this meeting, it's because no email was sent out for this meeting. The war that we have been fighting for over four years is against staff's failure to assess projects properly. Their failure to look at how these projects affect the overall neighborhood. I'll also argue that nobody on staff here has been threatened by the applicant. And so, yes, we are here because we believe the numbers simply stated, unemotional, unbiased, state- state, "You can rebuild your home. You can build those extra two bedrooms." The applicant's original home was around 2,400 square feet. 600 square feet or 400 or 500 square feet will get him those additional bedrooms. So, it will make everybody happy. It will comply with the rules, and it will get the applicant what he wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You have a maximum time of 10 minutes, please?
Yeah, I'll be very quick. I swear to God, none of you understand why they are here now, right? They came for 3147 Mesa Verde. He's talking about everything except that project, and makes laugh and wasting the time. He's talking about expenses of the city. He's always wasting, he's causing problems. He's supposed to be in a jail in this time, not in a, in a public hearing, because he's causing problem for the city hall. And the second, imagine if I cause him some problem, he will call the police right away. I'll be arrested. He's almost five years fighting for my building, but if I touch him, I touch something, I'll be arrested right away, right? I mean, he's a liar. I can prove that. He's a liar, and I don't know what's his problem. So, just please, don't waste city time, city money. Let me finish the house. It's going to be a beautiful house, and I always built, he's talking about a city Burbank. I'm 28 years building in a, living in a city Burbank. Every time I'm paying $25,000, $30,000 Burbank school taxes to build the projects. I'm supporting our local businesses. But every time you go, you see San Fernando, empty business, empty business, empty business. Because of people like this, they causing problem, people doesn't want to move to the Burbank, because everybody now knows what kind of problem we live right now. Every time we going with my wife, walking to the city downtown, we saw closed business, open, closed, open, closed, because of this kind of people causing problem for everybody. I'm a builder. I'm building houses. I'm not destroying houses like him. Thank you very much.
Would the staff like to make any further comments?
Thank you, Planning Board Member Rosati, for the time. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, including the appellants, the applicant, and any members of the public may be watching. The city has objective standards when it comes to what's allowed to be done, both in the single-family residential area, which includes the hillside development area, and the hillside development ordinance that was talked about. Those objective standards identify things such as maximum heights. They identify things such as floor area ratio, which dictates what you can build too. It identifies things such as setbacks. It identifies things such as where pools could be located, so on and so forth. In this specific case, the code states that this home could be built to a maximum square footage. It's identified on the staff report. I believe it's in the realm of 6,000 square feet, I could, I believe. But the reason I bring that up is, there was a lot of discussion regarding the size of the homes, as if it's some subjective standard. It isn't. Additionally, beyond that, in the appellant's presentation, I believe it was Mr. Jim Casey, there was a reference to eight hillside development findings. I just want to clarify, Preserve Burbank, in working with city staff and the city council, went through a three-to-four-year effort, through which we modified our single-family or residential standards, including our hillside ordinance, to be able to address issues such as compatibility and what that means. The checklist was put together as a replacement for that squishy language, such as compatibility. The checklist is supposed to identify the criteria and the standards that have to be met to be compatible with the neighborhood. So, in adding to that, the eight findings that are in Slide 25 of his presentation, I believe it's Page 13 of your packet, identifies eight findings. Those eight findings are incorrect. Those are the eight findings that were part of the previous code that was in place during the IDCO and before the IDCO, and the current findings are seven findings that are attached as the last two exhibits of your report and in the resolution, which identify the required findings, which look at privacy views, which incorporate the checklist as the criteria for compatibility on which this project meets, based on staff determination. So just to clarify that there is subjective standards that this project is meeting that go beyond subjectivity and what's being identified by the appellants tonight. That's all for staff. I'm available, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Chairperson Rosati, can I ask a clarifying question? Danny, can you step up real quick? So when it comes to, in essence, the linchpin highlighted item that's referenced here is subsection B that says reasonably consistent in scale and proportion to existing houses in the neighborhood, which was pre the current standards. Is that particular finding still in the current standards?
It is not. So, if I can have, just for clarification...
Just to clarify, so, in lieu of that, what the city did was establish the development standards that are currently in the R1 standards, as well as the neighborhood compatibility checklist with these updated findings as the total criteria for a similar project in the hillside.
You are correct, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for staff or the applicant or the appellant? I think we have lots, so why don't we have staff come up real quick? How big is this house, again?
So the home itself is 3,551 square feet, and there is, in addition to that, a 591-square-foot garage.
Okay, and then how does we, on Page 18 of this handout, how do we arrive at 3,742?
So 3,742, which is part of the staff report, and I believe the handout you're looking at, the 3,742 number is the overall floor area that's included in the floor area ratio calculation. So that number includes the size of the home itself, and also any square footage of the garage that's above 400 square feet in size. So when you add those two numbers together, it gives you 3,742.
And then what variance, what variance is the applicant asking for?
So the applicant is asking for an exception from the interior side yard setback for the first floor, specifically the portion of the property where the, the side of the property where the garage is located. The reason that that setback is being requested is, without the, without the exception, the setback would have to be 10 feet, which would mean that the driveway and the garage itself would be shifted 10 feet into the property. You would then end up having a garage that's towards the middle of the property, and it becomes the most dominant feature of the home. But beyond that, it would further limit the construction of the home, because there's existing things in the property, such as an existing pool, so on and so forth, that limit where things can be placed. Just for clarification, and so it's known, the existing home that's there right now has a setback of 4 feet 3 inches.
Okay.
They would maintain that.
And the way I understood it was, it was done purposely to, to not make that one feature so dominant.
You are correct.
So that is the correct reason?
Yes.
Okay. And one of the speakers mentioned about simply just complying. Has this applicant complied with everything that staff has asked for?
The applicant has complied with our requirements, or the city's requirements for single-family homes, which include the zoning requirements, the hillside ordinance requirements, and also the single-family design checklist requirements.
And I saw on the packet, but staff issued an approval for this.
You are correct.
So he's done what? He's followed the rules? He's done everything that you guys have asked? Council has asked, scaled down the project, scaled down the second story, repositioned the house? He's done everything that was asked of him?
You are correct.
Anybody else have questions for staff? Ms. Lu?
Thank you, Daniel, for your report. Just a few questions. So when applicant, excuse me, when the appellant appeals, they're asked, you know, "Which code are you appealing and what purpose?" Does the total price that has been paid or estimated in terms of the costs of this appeals and everything, is that something that's in the code as something that can be appealed? Like he listed in his initial slides that it's cost the city $37,000, $34,797. Is that something that you can appeal?
Danny, let me, if I may, board members. So what he's referring to is, on an annual basis, we go back and we evaluate what the cost to process an application is.
Right.
And it's part of the cost recovery process. The numbers that were referenced is, over this period of time, over the three years, there's been updates to the fee schedule. The $5,300 is the actual time it takes staff to fully review, prepare a staff report, do all the due diligence review and present to you all on an appeal and subsequently to council. The city has a policy, a fee schedule policy or fee policy, that looks at fees within a range of 20% to 80% of true cost. So when you look at the actual fee for the permit, the applicant fee, that is closer to the 80%. That is on the top range of what we apply a fee to for service. When it comes to the appeal fee, the appeal fee subsequently last year was reduced down to 20% of what the actual cost is. So whether it's a resident appealing it or a property owner that we deny their project under the current code, that appeal is a 20% of the total fee. The applicant is actually paying closer to true cost for an actual submittal of an application.
But to answer the direct question, no. The cost that the city expends to review and approve projects is not appealable, and it's not within the purview of the Planning Board.
Thank you. My other question is, regards to the cleanliness of the existing property and what it looks like right now, is that something that can be appealed?
So the cleanliness of the existing property, the, anyone who's concerned with that could reach out to our Code Enforcement Division. The information is on our city website, and our Code Enforcement Division could open up a code enforcement action, and if there is something that's not in compliance with the requirements of the Burbank Municipal Code, that would be enforced upon.
Right.
But to answer your question directly, no. Litter in the public right-of-way is not the grounds for appeal of an entitlement application by a property owner.
Thank you. Appellant also included a list of the 500, the homes within 500 feet of a subject property, and they crossed out 3144 Mesa Verde Drive for consideration. Is that something that can be just done that way?
It's not basis for an appeal based on the size of the home.
Thank you.
So more specifically, and maybe staff can address this, the code, when it refers to neighborhood compatibility, it describes what is considered the neighborhood. That was, and that standard of what is the neighborhood changed in the last code revision cycle. The definition of neighborhood does not qualify conforming properties, legal non-conforming properties, permitted properties. There's not another screen as to whether a property can be included or not included in, in what is the neighborhood. So if it's there, and if it's of a certain size, unless staff can inform us differently, it is considered part of the neighborhood, whether or not the existing size of the property matches the permits.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Board Member Hadian?
Thank you very much. I have a question for you. The table on Page 15, was it provided by staff or by appellant?
And when you say Page 15...
500 feet, homes within 500 feet of subject property.
And just for the record, that's in the, that's Page 15 of the applicant, of the appellant's presentation. So staff provided this initially as part of one of the previous projects that was considered for this property, and that was part of a separate review process that had separate zoning requirements, because our code was different at that point in time. This was not part of the current review.
Do we have any record of the height and their setback, or other architectural elements of these houses nearby?
So just to answer that, when, when looking at compatibility with the neighborhood, the requirement that has to be met is the checklist and compliance with the checklist. When it comes to the checklist, it does not look at things such as the size of the home, the size of the homes in the neighborhood. It does not look at things such as the height of the homes in the neighborhood. It looks at architectural design features, architectural elements of a proposal, and how those could be modified to have a better-designed home that incorporates some of the characteristics, architectural characteristics of the neighborhood. So, so no.
This is, I just wanted to refer to this table, but it is not complete. It's just talking about this core footage.
So that table is on Page D9 of your packet. It is Page 3 of staff's analysis from April 25, 2016.
D9?
D9, in the agenda packet. So that's analysis under the prior code from two and a half years ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Applicant? Appellant?
I have a question for Preserve Burbank, or Representative.
I've never been called Preserve Burbank.
I just refer to...
No, I appreciate it. Yes.
...the organization. I want to get into the details of inconsistency, and as far as I know, for every project review, there is a study of history, theory, urban context, architecture, and sustainability. And considering that the first few for majority of Burbank houses, history, theory, and urban context come from Lockheed era, so for, to reach a common ground, I would like to know what exactly is not consistent between the current proposed project and between what you say is compatibility to neighborhood? Is it because the original project has been denied, and then a third party revises the elevation, they resubmit, and again, it denies? It got denied. Then the second submittal has been revision of the first one, and Planning Board approves, city council denies, and this is considered three and a half, or the fourth submittal of the project. What exactly is the reason that you find it? I know that all of us have visual GPS, and that's probably how we get to the overall conclusion, something is inconsistent or is consistent. But I specifically focus on this project and the elements of inconsistency. Is it height? Is it the building orientation? Is this the opening on the facade facing the street? Or other design issues such as setback or floor area? Because unless we get to the details, that what is inconsistent?
I apologize if I wasn't clear on that. The original project failed three of the eight. That included views and privacy and massing and articulation. And so that was why the city council unanimously denied the project. The project as presented tonight is, has conformed to the majority of the aesthetics to try to soften the pig, if you will. But the pig is still the pig. It still exceeds by 1,000 square feet, the maximum, the largest home in the neighborhood it exceeds. And I would suggest that you can't throw out, you have to throw out, and I'm in architectural background in real estate, and I've taught appraisal courses. And in appraisal, you have to throw out non-conforming properties. And so the 4,500, which is actually 6,500-square-foot house that lacks a hillside development permit, should be removed. Even if it weren't, it would only bring the average up by about 200 square feet, because it's one out of 12 homes. So the size is the issue with this project. We didn't address the non-conforming side setback, because that, we think, would be allowable to stay if the applicant rebuilt his house. Nobody's been stopping him from rebuilding the house that was burned down. I mean, he could have done that four years ago.
So, the lot is about 22,000 a square foot?
Right. The building pad is significantly smaller, because the hillside is a protected element on this lot, and so when saying 22,000, it could be 80,000 square feet. But the building pad, as defined when this entire neighborhood was developed, actually, if you look at it, the exist, the original home on that lot, on the buildable pad, was at a .4 FAR. actually, if you look at it, the exist, the original home on that lot on the buildable pad was at a .4 FAR. Now you can bring it to .19 by saying, but all of this unbuildable hill gives them the right to build larger. And even the new design guidelines don't address that. They, or they do address that and they say, no, you can't. You can't include the hillside. So the FAR calculation goes out the window as soon as you get to the hillside because as soon as you start to apply compatibility. Now, we discovered two things tonight. One, I do want to question Daniel on his square footage because he sat with us for an hour while I calculated and measured the entire square footage. We were, we were within 40 square feet at 3800 square feet. He had 37. He's now telling you tonight the house is only 35 because he's taking another 200 square feet off for 600 square feet for the garage, which is not allowed. It's only 400 square feet are exempted. So this project is still, unless it was revised from the time we made the appeal to now, this project is still a 3,700 square foot house. So to answer your question specifically, the home simply is too large for this neighborhood according to the original hillside development, which we're finding out tonight, staff took the liberty of revising without any request by the community or Preserve Burbank. It was never, the hillside ordinance was never a problem. It was the rest of Burbank that failed to have the protections of the hillside. Finding out tonight that the hillside ordinance was revised by the staff to eliminate the word size and scale. They were specifically taken out. Now this isn't Fred Ramirez's issue. It isn't Daniel's. Neither of them were here during the IDCO. We've had massive staff turnover. So they aren't even aware of what the intent of the hillside, or excuse me, the new design guidelines were. But I think Fred really summarized it well. They're, they're really dancing around the issue. You know, those things soften the pig, but the pig is still the size of the pig. And that's what our concern is. We believe it's 1,000 square foot larger than it should be.
So we narrowed down all the, all the elements that I talked about to floor area? And that's the major concern here?
The major concern at this point is, yes, this is still trying to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five pound sack.
And by right, even in hillside development, I know they have less ratio. They get about, I think, 30%. If it's flat, 40% and if it's hillside, 30 or 35%. They are at 12%.
No, they're not. They're not. The hillside, as the new design guidelines were put in place, they exempt the hillside and they're not allowed to be used into that FAR calculation. I can't tell you that. You have to understand, I have a full-time job, a life, a family. I don't get paid to do this. I don't get paid to do this. So when I came in the last time out with Daniel, and Daniel is a wonderful young man, sharp as a tack. We sat there with him and he turned to Sue and I said, boy, if I'd have known you guys were going to do all this, I'd have brought some extra work. But I had to sit there with a scale and I had to measure. In fact, in the slides, I actually have my calculation sheet and I verified with Daniel. I came up with 3,800, you were at 3,771. Boom, we're right on the money. All is well. We agree on how big this house is. And so as far as what the new FAR is using the percentage of the hillside and all this, I could not even begin to come up with that calculation. But this house is not at 12% FAR.
Go ahead. Did you, did you want to say something?
Well, I was going to say this goes well beyond the line of questioning and-
I was gonna say-
You're gonna need to allow the applicant rebuttal if argument just continues on like this.
Thank you.
It's just ask the question.
I'm trying to answer a question. Did you not ask me about FAR?
I did and I got the answer. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff, the applicant, the appellant?
Can we clarify that FAR issue, Daniel? Just one more time, just so we can be very clear whether the hillside is included or not?
And just to clarify, in the code, when the code was updated, there was objective criteria for establishing allowed floor area, FAR. That's what it's called. And in the hillside, there, like planning board member Hadiyan mentioned, if there is a slope, the slope is included in the FAR, but there is a reduction done. In this case, if you look at, I believe it's page two or three of your report, there's a table that goes over product information. The allowed floor area allowed on this property per the code, including the hillside development ordinance, is the nexus of 6,000 square feet. This project is proposing a square footage for the home of 3,551 and of a garage of 591. So it is within the FAR allowance, both in the single-family code and in the hillside ordinance. Thank you.
Got it. I know the clear the hearing closed and the planning board will deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Board member Lou?
Thank you to everyone who came tonight and who spoke on the matter. And it's unfortunate that we are at this juncture. I think that sometimes codes could be written better with more clarity. I think though, as it stands right now, that the applicant's, the applicant's project is within the existing codes. And appellant, you know, I understand, you know, you disagree, but you can't just say, well, I'm going to do the FAR this way and, or I'm going to use these, these houses and not this house. It's not how the analysis is. And when we're looking at the objective criteria, the applicant has met it. And for that, those reasons, I support the staff's recommendation to deny the appeal.
Board member Hadiyan?
Thank you very much for presenting the project. And I also looked at the plans. I looked at the revisions. I believe that the second revision has all the requirements for compatibility with the neighborhood. And also the floor area is compatible with what development standards allows. I can support the project and make the findings.
Thank you. There was a, you know, there was a significant amount of time in the beginning of the appellant's presentation about the cost and permits and appeals and I really have no idea what that has to do with anything. Only because of the fact that the applicant did everything they're allowed to do. They're allowed to appeal project. They're allowed to submit a project. And the appellant is allowed to appeal project. And if this body agrees to allow it to happen without prejudice, we are allowed to. And if our council agrees to allow the applicant to submit without prejudice, they're allowed to. So the whole thing about the fees and actually had really nothing to do with the meat of, of the issue. If you don't like the fact that there's a couch sitting on the sidewalk, call code enforcement. That's what they're for. Again, I think there's just a lot of leveling of blame consistently. But there are remedies. You can call code enforcement. You can call bulky item. If you're a good neighbor, if it was my neighborhood, I'll just give you an example. I live in a, in a cul-de-sac and there's always someone leaving trash or something. You know what I do? I get my trash can out and I go clean it. It's part of being a good neighbor. It's part of being, it's your neighborhood. And if someone left a couch in front of my house, I'd call bulky item and have them pick it up. It's part of your neighborhood. But the pointing of fingers, there are remedies for all these things. So I just think that those parts of the presentation just, to me, is a lot of wind. It has nothing to do with the meat of, of the topic. I personally thought in the last presentation, the applicant was well within his right to build what he wanted to build. Our council saw that different. And, you know, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. You can ask 100 different people to look at this project and you'll get 100 different answers. I thought then that he was within his right and I certainly think now. And you're a better man than me because honestly, you've gone to the well many times to try to build this house. And you've listened to our council. You've taken those guidelines and put them on paper. I'm sure that cost you money to have new plans drawn up. And again, I, I believe that this is within the scope of our guidelines. And I am going to rule in favor of our staff.
Not sure where to start and please, I apologize to everyone here if I'm, I'll be jumping around back and forth with different ideas. I'll start with the fact that based on the square footage of this lot, the property owner has a right to build about an 8,900 square foot home on it based on a .40 FAR. Now, Daniel explained that because of the hillside, not all that square footage is taken into consideration. And on page two of seven of the planning board's report, I mean, I apologize, planning's report, the size of the house is 6,693. And whether this particular house is at this point 3,700, 3,800 square feet or not, is about 3,000 square feet less than what the property owner could build on this property. Now, we've heard here tonight, some people are professional real estate brokers. Appraisals have been long time, I guess, practicing in the field of real estate. The calculation is very simple. This property owner, because he can, he's not with all the difficulties, he has reduced the size of his home to let's say 3,700 square feet. He's out about 3,000 square feet. 3,000 square feet at an average price of $400 a square foot. He's out about $1.2 million. So for all those who are here and saying that, well, the council did it without prejudice, the board did it without prejudice, they didn't force them to pay the fee to reapply to so forth and so on. First of all, that is not within the public's purview how the board or the council decides as to how the applicant or what, what decisions they should come to. And I think a $1.2 million loss off of a property, I don't think anyone here would be willing to take that hit. Everyone glossed over that part. Now, just a brief history, I think we've heard it before, but let's reiterate and go over it again. August 2015, it was a 6,052 square foot proposal. Then that proposal was reduced to 4,255 square feet. March 2016, the project came here in front of the board and it was denied by the community director and the board also denied it. I was here for that denial and I was one of the board members who voted to deny the project. April 2016, it was revised to 4,000 square feet and came in front of the board again. The board approved it. January 2017, actually it was January 2017, the board approved the project. And June 2017, it went from the council and the council denied it. But there are notes here in the report, planning report, page three of seven, middle of the page, item number two. It says, "The second story footprint of the home should be redesigned in order to minimize impacts on views of the surrounding projects." It doesn't say eliminate. Continues to say, "The second story footprint of the home should be redesigned in order to minimize impacts on privacy of the surrounding properties." It does not say eliminate. "The home should incorporate additional architectural characteristics that are predominant in the neighborhood, such as extended eaves, which this project has." At the bottom of the page, same page, it says, "Under the current regulations, the area of the home's perimeter walls are included in the home's floor area." "In the floor area of the homes proposed in submittal number one and submittal number two did not include the area of the home's perimeter walls." So even that's kind of included right now in the numbers that we're talking about. It continues to say, "The size, footprint and overall height of the second story was reduced and shifted away from the neighboring property in order to minimize the project's impacts on privacy and the views of the surrounding neighborhood." And I believe that satisfies, satisfies two of the requirements that the council or suggestions that the council made when it denied the project. Additionally, it states, "The design of the home was modified to incorporate architectural characteristics found in the surrounding neighborhood." Well, if we're talking about compatibility, I think the house, as we've seen it, even though not much time was spent on the actual design, it, I believe, with its articulation and the way it's designed and setbacks, it does comply with or it blends in basically. That's the bottom line. And I've driven to the neighborhood and I've looked at, or looked at many of the houses there. On page four of the report, during the review of the project, city staff worked with the project applicant to make additional plan, design revisions, including adjustments to the proposed floor area ratio, FAR calculation, and adjustment to the proposed overall height of the home, and adjustment to the size of the vehicle parking garage, and incorporating more pronounced roof eaves into the home's design. The report continues to say, "The approval was issued on page five of seven as the project was found to be in compliance with all of the required findings for approval of the SFSDP and the HDP, which includes the setback exceptions." On page five, under discussion, it states, "An overview of the project's compliance with the checklist is contained in finding number two of the project approval letter and in attachment A to the project approval letter, which outlines how the project complies with each applicable item. As discussed in greater detail in exhibit G, it is staff's assessment that the project has incorporated design revisions that are consistent with the setting, orientation, forms, masses and character of the surrounding residential neighborhood." Page six of the report continues to state, "Single-family special development permit and hillside development permit review per BMC sections 10-1-607C and 10-1-607D. In order to approve an SFP and HDP, it must first be established that the applicable findings can be made for approval of the project. It is the city staff's assessment that all the applicable findings can be made for approval of the project." It references, it says exhibit I, SFP required findings and exhibit J, HDP required findings. "In identifying whether the required findings could be made for the project, city considered whether the project would comply with the BMC zoning regulations, whether the project would comply with the BMC neighborhood compatibility checklist, and three, whether the project would comply with the BMC development standards for the hillside area." And then it goes to outline the city staff's assessment in detail. We've heard from different speakers tonight, and my concern is the fact that some of these speakers want us to take their assessment of the project over an incredibly talented and experienced staff. Professionals who basically live and breathe this every day. Now, this is the fourth, let's just say, third report. And they would like us to believe that they understand the law, or they understand planning better than any of the staff that are currently employed by the City of Burbank. I'm extremely disheartened by the fact that citizens of this city without any consideration don't extend any respect to the knowledge and the expertise that's embodied and that comes through these pages that we read. These are not blank pages. These are pages that mean something. They're pages that contain information, accurate information, not conjecture, not innuendo. So in that regard, I can't be dismissive, and I don't think anyone should be, of the reporting that's made here, and the time and effort that has gone into preparing this report. The extent of the detail that was reviewed, the extent of the modifications that this project has undergone, and the extent of the hardship carried on by all involved, and I would say, including the appellant. Some of the presentation made here tonight, at best, can be characterized as misleading. A lot to do about cost was talked about, but if I'm not mistaken, the original cost to appeal a project was about $1,200. When I say original, I mean, just recently. And it was revised down, as Mr. Ramirez alluded to, to about 20% of the cost of whatever as review would go through. And it's my understanding through some information that I've received, that it was the Preserve Burbank that lobbied the city council to make that reduction. Now I have members from the Preserve Burbank here arguing that the cost is too high, or it's not adequate, or it's actually, I apologize, that the cost of appealing is too low, that it doesn't cover the city's cost. That's quite correct. Perhaps the cost of appealing should go up to $5,000. Maybe Mr. Ramirez can make a note of that. We are not interested in evaluating personal animosities or vendetta. The board is given the task of evaluating, and impartially, I might add, everything that has been presented to the board, reports, statements, slides. And I think the board has succeeded in doing so in every single project. There might be some side considerations here for the appellant and the applicant, but they are no concern for the board. Now, the several references made and some sort of parameters were established as to, well, the houses in the neighborhood can only be from 2,100 to 2,700 square feet. If someone can present me with the statute that supports that position, I would like to see it. The guidelines provide for controlling, and I think Mr. Rosati would agree with this, when this entire process was going through its steps and evolution, the idea or the spirit of this evolution or changes that came about were because we were concerned about bulk and mass. Anyone can build a 4,000-square-foot house, a 6,000-square-foot house that addresses both of those issues. Someone can build a 2,200-square-foot house, and it can still be bulky and look massive. So it's not a pure numbers play. In that regard, we've heard from the planning from the planner, that the there are objective factors, and this is something that they do on a daily basis. And I'm quite, again, disheartened by the fact that there's this type of feelings and animosity between neighbors. It's really unnecessary to call someone's home a pig. But, and then expect some sort of courteous reply or cordial cooperation from the other side. So, I would only say that, let us try and be respectful of each other's opinion. We all have opinions, and having an opinion is fine. But it isn't, the manner in which that opinion is expressed is the issue. And I think we all need to be more thoughtful and considerate of each other's feelings or concerns. And one of the speakers brought up the fact that no one has built a basement that was 1,600 square feet, and that was unprecedented. Now, it is clear that the code allows for this. Before anyone went or took a spacecraft to the moon, one would have said, well, no one's taken a spacecraft to the moon, it's unprecedented, so it should never happen. But it does, doesn't it? So the notion that something unprecedented is automatically disallowed is a misnomer at best. So, in summary, if there is such a thing, the applicant, I'll just call him the homeowner, from a 6,000-square-feet home, at a great loss, financial loss, I would say, has now working on a 3,500 or 3,700-square-foot house, which I believe in its design is compatible with the neighborhood, has met all the underlying requirements, has satisfied what the city deems to be the right type of structure to be placed on that property. And when the city staff were in balance, if we take, if I say, well, are you going to take the word of someone who doesn't do this on a daily basis, who does not have a formal training? Or are you going to take the evaluation of someone who has done this every day and who has formal training in the area? Well, I would have to err on the side of caution and take the word of someone who does have the training and the experience in evaluating such projects. Having said that, I would be inclined to deny the appeal and approve the project as it's submitted.
Two. Well, the hearing is closed. On the motion? Yes.
I had a question for the city attorney. I was reading in the other, in the history of this, in terms of coming to a decision with prejudice or without prejudice, is that something that the board can find? Or is that something only Reserve First City Council? Is it appropriate in this case?
Only if you're denying it.
Well, we would deny the appeal.
If, yes, if we, no, if we are approving the appeal, then we would have the option to, well, do it with prejudice or without prejudice. But if we are denying the appeal, then there would be no issue.
I wanted you with prejudice.
Any other questions, comments? If not, if someone will make the appropriate motion.
Oh, I can move. I would move that the planning board approve of the resolution, denying an appeal to the Community Development Director's approval of project number 18-0000368 for a single-family development permit and a hillside development permit.
All in favor, please signify. Any discussion? Well, I'm sorry, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And anyone upstanding? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, oral communications are limited to items not on the planning board agenda, and comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone here for oral communication? Not on the planning board's agenda.
Actually, with special meetings, at special meetings, public comments are limited to items on the special meeting agenda. So I think that's a misprint.
Okay. That's why I was like, okay.
Yes.
Great. Simon Hamel?
Hi, I, oh, you can just go, it's really short. I I experienced some of the same things that Jim did. And in all this stuff, I hope that was mentioned, like, you guys were talking about just being civil to each other is important. I mean, even tonight, I thought that we were sort of done with this. You guys have really criticized me for bringing my attorney as part of my appeal, and what you didn't see was some of those things. It's, I mean, I can't prove them. We were getting ready to have a restraining order put together, but it stopped after the hearing. And you could see tonight, like, the shouting and stuff while you were doing that, but that extends, believe it or not, beyond this room. And I, you talked to me about possibly, you know, an idea of discrimination being a part of this, and I expressed to you that I mean, I oppose this single house, and as part of it, I also have been subjected to anti-Semitic comments and things like that, pointed my way on the internet, suggesting that if the person across the street was Jewish as I am, that I wouldn't have made this appeal. It's like unfortunate that we've reached a level of this kind of rancor and discussion as part of these things. And, you know, I accept the board's decision in my case, and it still doesn't go away. I just wanted to have our view analyzed, and I found other problems with the case at the time, I addressed them, and I hope, I hope things are better than that, and I hope everyone knows that I personally, I can't speak for anyone else. I know what it's like to be picked on, and I know what it's like to be someone on the outside. And I hope nobody in the city feels that way, even though I can see how one might take that position. So everyone, you know, in this case, Armenian people, I hope they're not they're not put upon by this, because that's wrong. So I'm sorry that they left and they didn't hear that, but thank you for your time.
Mr. Casey?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that planning board members have stated tonight. The cost of the city is a lot of wind. According to Mr. Rosati, who once ran for city council, I think it'll be interesting if you run again, whether or not the cost of the city is a lot of wind. The relevance is that this city claims to be in a financial crisis. And that the actions of the planning department and the planning board are actually amplifying that crisis. A statement to call bulky item pickup if someone puts a sofa in front of my house. This is a neighbor putting a sofa in front of his own house, turning his own property into trash. What's also interesting is members of this board drove by the property and staff drove by the property as representatives of the city. None of you called bulky item pickup. The hillside ordinance was revised to allow this house, the house was not revised to conform to the original hillside ordinance. Mr. Tenmasian could have been told the first day, or Tenoyan could have been told the first day he came, you can't build over 2,700 square feet, but he was not. According to the planning board, this applicant should be allowed to build a 6,000-square-foot house. So we're actually going in the opposite direction now. We're now saying, he should be going bigger. Incredibly talented and professional staff that understands the codes better than we citizens. The IDCO and the design guidelines were required because staff and the planning department were not doing their jobs. That's why this city authorized $200,000 to revise the hillside, or excuse me, the design guidelines, and staff, after losing two appeals unanimously by city council, revised the hillside ordinance without authorization. There is nowhere on the record that the city council asked the staff to revise the hillside ordinance. The appeal fee was increased without public knowledge or city council knowledge by 855%. We argued that it was absurdly high in relationship to the $895 building permit fee at the time. We were the only city in California paying more to appeal a project than someone was paying to get it built. The point I was making is that a project was unanimously rejected 5-0 by city council, was done without prejudice. That allowed the loser of the appeal to resubmit without cost, and the winners of the appeal were forced to pay $1,200 to continue in their appeal of the same project. Thank you.
Sue Cleerman?
Thank you, and good evening again. Again, this is a process, a process that many of us have been involved with for years. It's not over, meaning it's still a work in progress. But I have to say, myself, Jim Casey, and other members of Preserve Burbank have always been respectful of that process. Maybe we don't agree. Maybe there's some comments that we, you know, don't agree with. But we've never attacked applicants or appellant. We've tried to work through, what is the goal here? Now, maybe some of you have seen, read the compatibility review checklist, got design guidelines. They are guidelines. They are the shoulds, not the shalls. And these were never intended to weaken the hillside development, hillside ordinance. In fact, if you go back and you watch the tape and listen to city council, they said, "We don't need to touch the hillside. Hillside's good." It's got the protections. It's the rest of Burbank we need to bring up for their protection. So this is a process. Appreciate your time and thoughtful consideration. But again, it's a work in progress. Thank you.
Spinky Taylor?
Hello. Thank you so much for allowing me to see. I did only wanted to mention that truly, Mr. Rosati, with all respect, of course I would pick it up. I've picked up garbage from the street in different parts of the street. But on that property, it's horrendous, it's ongoing. Daniel's come and seen big rigs trucked, and I've been there when he's come, big rig trucks parked illegally, and he said, "Well, call and report it." I'm quite intimidated to call and report it. He's been very vocal in being opposed to on any level, and I'm, you know, I'm kind of intimidated by him, kind of afraid of him, because you can see he's kind of boisterous, and, but he can be very threatening and has been to us. So I know he just says, "We're just old people with dogs." I work, I, you know, I have a business as well. It's not, it's not as it appears, I promise. And I wish that we had taken a picture of that pad, because it's hill, there's not much that could be built, that could be 800, whatever you're suggesting, 6,000 square feet, could never even go. It's ridiculous. That other house was built because, I don't know, someone turned around and looked the other way, because there's no way that that big house could have ever been approved, and so it was built without approval. I think was the point Jim was making, that suddenly, it's 60-something, I don't know how big that house was, but it's really, really, really large, unlike anything in the area, that it can suddenly determine the size of everything else is absurd to me. But I agree he should have a house, and I understand he wants a house, and I, and there's a lot of things we want, but it's really, because I said to, even to Jim, and Sue, look, it's, of course he wants this. It's, it's not, he's not who we're fighting. We have to just get the city council and the Planning Board just to do their job. That's all, just enforce the codes. Because in other places where the homes are very compatible, they have codes, and so they're adhered to it, you know, and then, you know, because they have big, big houses, but not in this particular area. This is not an immediate neighborhood with big, huge houses. They're up the hill, and those were the estates, like big, big houses. We always call them the big-ass houses. They are up the hill. But, but our neighborhood, if somebody wants, I don't know what he wants, like $3 billion house that he's worth $3 million, they're not going to come to our neighborhood and buy a $3 million house. They're going to go further up. But he's got this one that's been on the market forever and ever that he couldn't sell, because it's, it's so huge. And who's going to buy a house like that amongst his other little houses? Anyway, just wanted to say that. And I would have picked up the mess, I promise, and I have done so. And, you know, because I agree with you. You see something, I can't move a couch, I have MS, but also, but there, oh, sorry, that's, does that mean, stop.
Go ahead, Chris.
Oh, I'm just saying, I would definitely do what I can to help my neighborhood and clean up whatever, but, and he says that we made that mess in his property. I have never made a mess in his property, nor would I, because I want them to be happy and I want them to build a home. I really do. I just don't, that one's just so big. It truly, and if you saw the pad, you'd go, "Okay, how are you going to put a big house on this little pad?" Because it's all hill. I mean, I have hill all the way up that I can't, you know, but, and I pay to clean that hill all the way. So, you know, it's a big hill, so I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to reports. No new reports. Approval of the minutes? Have we had a chance to review the minutes? If so, if we can have the appropriate motion?
I move to approve the Planning Board minutes from October 22nd, 2018.
Okay, we have a first.
I'll second it.
First and a second. All in agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye across the board. Anyone abstaining? Anyone opposing? Saying none. Items from the Planning Board? Anyone have any items? Saying none. City planner comments?
No.
There was a proposal for the next meeting to be at 5:00. Is it 5:00 or is it 6:00? I saw.
It's at 6:00.
Is it 6:00? I saw an email asking if we could do 5:00, maybe?
It probably was, probably on a future project if we were going to do a site visit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so we're at 6:00. All right, everybody, we will see you at December 10th, 6:00 here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.